Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Leon County Democratic Executive Committee Forum for the Leon County Commission, District Five Election. This is a countywide election for an at-large seat. My name is Bill Davis and I'm here on behalf of all of the various organizations that have organized this, and they've helped me with the questions. I want to thank them. And they've told me to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm going to move real quickly. I've lived here for over 50 years. Came here to go to school, fell in love with the music scene and the natural environment, fell in love with a local girl, and I've raised three third-generation Tallahasians here, and I love Tallahassee. I'm a lawyer, and I've been president of the organization that put on Christmas connection, president of Florida Legal Services statewide, been deeply involved in legal aid organization and know the needs of that community, I believe. So that's me. I'm doing this because they asked me to. That's the only reason. We have a packed agenda today. I want to remind all of the people in the audience that it's important that we be cordial and respectful with one another as best we can. And the first thing we're going to do is have two-minute statements by each of the candidates. I have my little senior assist, which is a timer, and it will make a noise. And if you don't stop shortly after you finish your sentence, I might have to jump in a little more firmly. So we're going to go by alphabetical order by last names. And so up first will be Mr. Ferguson, and I'm going to ask you to give two minutes of introductory comments.
Thank you so much again for allowing me to be with you all today. My name is Rudy Ferguson. I am the pastor of a local church here in the Griffin Hype community. I grew up in this church as usher and now pastor 25 years later. I'm also, I've been married now for about 30 years, and I'm proud to say that. I married my church house, not my schoolhouse, but I married my church house. Together, we have four grown children, six grandchildren. And I'm also the executive director of the Frontline Project that incorporates the Dream Center of Tallahassee. Among a lot of my boards and things that I chair, I am the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Council for the Tallahassee Police Department wherein we work to bridge the gap between our most vulnerable communities along with law enforcement. What really got me into community servant leadership was the idea, or should I say the appointment, rather, of working for one of our great governors, the late, great Governor Lawton Charles when I was 23, appointed to be to the Advisory Council of the MLK Institute for Nonviolence. In that capacity, I served the governor for seven years until I turned 30. And in that capacity, I've learned one thing, that when you find out you're called in, your career becomes easy. My career is serving people. I am a community servant, and I planned to do that until the good Lord decided to call me home because we have a need for community service. We have a need for consensus building. We have a need for those who know how to tackle and has faced some of our most challenging issues in this city. And with that being said, I am excited about this opportunity, the privilege to throw my name in the hat to become your next county commissioner at large, and in that capacity, I will be serving the people's interests. My motto is simple, run with Rudy, because Rudy has been running for you and Rudy will continue to run with you. So again, thank you for this opportunity to be on this panel and to tell you why I think I'll be the best candidate going forward in this county election. Thank you.
All right. And now, Mr. Johnson, you're next.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Josh Johnson. I am a seven-generation Leon County. I was born here. I have lived here. I have enjoyed here. I have worked here, and I have served here. All of my education was in Leon County Public Schools. My undergraduate degree is from FAMU. My master's degree is also from FAMU. I am a local educator. I teach high school classes at a Title I high school, Godbe High School, the greatest high school on planet Earth. I also teach adjunct college classes through TCC. I am the president and steward of one of Tallahassee's proudest institutions in the 621 Art Gallery, and I also am a small business owner in this community. Without ego, I think that I have gained the reputation of somebody of action, and moreover than that, somebody of deliberate action. I think that that has been brought to bear by many things that I do in this community and also by the way that I've run this campaign. I enjoy more endorsements. One of them is one of the host committees of this event, the Leon County Democratic Environmental Caucus. I have almost 300 individual donors. That's more than everybody in the race combined with some to spare. I believe that people believe that not only are we the most viable, but we are the most serious and we are the most committed to the issues that are before the citizens of Leon County. I thank you for having me. I enjoy this. I'm going to enjoy this robust conversation about issues, about policy, and about all else that will help us guide Leon County into the future. Thank you so much. My name is Josh Johnson, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. And now Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this time. I am Nick Maddox, your Leon County Commissioner at Large, and I appreciate the opportunity to be before you today. It's exciting to be able to speak to fellow Democrats about moving forward as your county commissioner at large, and I look forward to continuing to serve you. I've been on the board now since 2010 and done a lot of things since then. A lot of actions, been taking a lot of things, moving Leon County forward. I've tried my best to be a good listener as well as partner with our local organizations and hear out all of the things that all of our constituents have to say and the things that you'd like to see done here in Leon County. Some of the things that I think are most important here is that when we look at our moving forward, when we look at economic development and poverty, something's going to be something we're going to have to tackle over the next four years with COVID still lingering around and inflation as high as it's ever been. I am married. I have three young children. One is 15, one is 11, and the other is three. My youngest is my little boy Nicholas. He's a ball of energy. I love him very much. I want to continue to serve because I believe I have the energy. I believe I have the knowledge and the experience to move us forward. And I believe that Leon County and the city of Tallahassee are on the right track to do some amazing things. And so to tackle some of these issues that we have, you've got two other great candidates on this Zoom, but I believe I'm the one with the experience and the one that can get it done. So I ask for your support, and I look forward to this great conversation, and thank you so much for having this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox, and thank you really to all three of you candidates for being with us today. It's very good for the community that you've done so. And I want to remind all of the people that are attending that we're going to be taking questions at the end of the program. And if you're on the Zoom, you can click down and you can type your question in chat, and there's people that are going to be monitoring that. And if you want to ask it live on Zoom, click on reactions and raise your hand, and there'll be somebody here to help with that. And I also would like to ask the candidates if they'd like to, when they get a minute, to put their contact information in the chat and share it with everyone so they might know how to get back with you. So now we're going to go into the question and answer part of the forum. And I do have the clock here for the two-minute portion. And so I want to say to the candidates, you will have two minutes to answer, and I'm going to keep time and notify you when time is up. I'll let you finish a sentence. All right. We're going to begin alphabetically and rotate from there. And they tell me we're going to rotate starting with alphabetically by first name. But in any event, the first topic is growth management. And the suggestions is made that maybe our growth is managing us rather than the other way around. And the first question, which is going to be the same basically for each of you, is for Mr. Johnson. What overall grade would you give Leon County regarding land use and development projects that have occurred or been approved in the last 12 months? Something A through F. Give us a couple of examples if you can, perhaps a specific project you think is a good example of smart growth or maybe a project where the county maybe has missed the mark.
Thank you so much for the question. As an educator, grading papers is one of my favorite things to do. And so when you're grading a paper, you grade them objectively. It's nothing personal. It's just an objective mark. And so while I do not hope to cast an indictment, I will say that the grades got to be a D, and it has to be a D for this reason. The expanse of our urban services area has been so deleterious to the fabric of our county that it has become visible. It is no longer just a conversation. When we see the northeast side of town expanding upward from land use with deals like you asked for specifics, the $80 million that was given to Alani and a total of almost $100 million given to a northeast gateway project, I do not think growth management has been applied by local governance or local government the way that it should be. We are seeing things that are causing the rest of our county to hurt because of this push upward and push outward. The COT plan gives us a very specific formula for growth. The COT plan was crafted by policy figures that we've trusted for years, and I think that we've all agreed that the COT plan, while it will be subject to revisions, is a plan that we should follow. And we have a piecemeal expansion of our urban services area to the southeast and to the northeast. Right? It leaves other places of our county out. And so growth management has not been applied well in terms of local governance, which is the decision-making of our county commissioners, in my opinion.
Thank you. And Commissioner Maddox, the same question. What overall grade would you give Leon County regarding land use and development projects that have occurred in the past 12 months, A through F? Please give us two examples if you can, maybe a project you think is an example of smart growth or an example where maybe the county has missed the mark.
Thank you. I'll give us a B. I look at some of the things we've done in the past year. Really looking at our COT plan and the time it's taken us to refurbish that, and that's mostly where that B comes from. We need to really pay attention to get that COT plan piece done. We talk about Walani and the expansion there. That was 20 years in the making from the city of Tallahassee and agreements with the Walani plantation piece. I believe that it's given us an opportunity to grow out as well as grow up within the city limits. I think we have to balance it. I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all. I don't think that we exclusively look at, especially with the shortage of housing, that we look at just revitalizing our urban core. I think we also have to look at opportunities for us to expand or grow in those outline areas of our county. And so we're not just talking about growth out on the north side of town. We also expanded the urban services area on the south as well. And so I believe there needs to be a good balance of growth when it comes to environmentally sensitive growth as well, when it comes to how we look at growing here in Leon County, because we're going to have to. If you look at the fact that we're going to have in the next 20 years about 100,000 people coming into Leon County to live, new constituents, whether it be people from outside or births here or whatever, we're going to have to look at how we do it responsibly, and I believe growing out and up is the way to go about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Ferguson, the same question. What overall grade would you give A through F to Leon County regarding land use and development projects for the last 12 months? And please give us some examples if you can.
Well, when I think about our communities holistically, I can see that the northeast side of town is developing and is growing. However, that's not necessarily the same truth for the southwest part of Tallahassee. I don't see where the growth has shown any equilibrium. It seems like one side of growth is on one side of town and the other one is struggling to get there. I believe as a community resident of the Griffin Hype neighborhood and living in one of the most poorest zip codes in Leon County and in Florida, 32304, I believe that that growth has not matriculated, that money has not matriculated, and those resources have not matriculated to the communities that need it the most. We have a lot of growth in other areas, like I said before. I would say in grading, I'm not a school teacher, but I am an instructor where I teach youth anger management and gang resistance education to a lot of our young people who are unfortunately going through the court system through the Department of Juvenile Justice or any other juvenile program. But I do have a satisfactory of completion. So I would say if I had to write a letter of satisfactory of completion, I would say I'm unsatisfied with how we are growing. We are growing tremendously. A lot of people are coming to Tallahassee from all over the country, and we're not able to keep up with the growth of, or should I say, the increase of people coming to our town. And I also believe that when you really look at where we are right now with our most vulnerable communities, they aren't growing. They're still stuck in certain places, and they're not growing. And while growing is around them, growth rather is around them, it is not for them. And I think that's very important to understand. So in grading, I would have to give them a D or probably a C- in regards to it because I think and I know that we could do better. I believe they haven't looked closely at our most vulnerable communities holistically to see how we can bring them up to Tallahassee and growing with also.
We need to wrap it up right there. Very good. Thank you very much. And our next topic is going to be affordable housing. And I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Maddox, on this question. And the question is, do you support the use of county funds or its regulatory resources to foster housing for the unsheltered and to facilitate affordable housing for those with low or moderate income? If you do, how have you done that during your time on the commission?
Thank you for that question. So I do and I have done that through different places with land banking and other things. We look at the tiny house construction that happened out on the west side of town, I believe it was. We had to change the policies there to embrace that concept. We are all into all options that we can possibly come up with to help affordable housing. I was a part of a group that, our lead group, that took a tour across the United States about three or four cities to look at how they were revitalizing their housing there and came back with purpose-built as an option for us to bring it back to town. And it's going to help us in the Orange Avenue area, Appalachian Ridge area, to really start to redevelop and look at how we approach affordable housing in that area. And so as we move forward, I'm all game for whatever we can do to help with the affordable housing piece of it. A large part of that piece is in the rental market. And so looking at how we can quite possibly, you know, not limit the growth, but give people notice of when their rental rates are being raised to a point that they can't handle it is something that we're looking into right now. And so we're all hands on deck on really dealing with affordable housing. Another thing that we're looking at, and I think is going to help us out a lot, is inclusionary housing as a policy. And not just in one area, but across any development that comes in town. There should be affordable housing in every development that's built here on out in Leon County. So as we move forward to embracing those concepts, I look forward to us having even more affordable housing and really cornering the market on those things.
You have a few seconds left. The question was, how would you expend county funds and use the regulatory resources to accomplish it? And you still have about 30 seconds.
Well, again, I just talked about, you know, looking at expanding our different funds. Like for instance, we have our ship funds and everything like that to go for affordable housing, looking at how we can regulatory, you know, create regulations to make it cheaper for builders to build and stuff like that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And now Pastor Ferguson, the same question. Do you support the use of county funds or regulatory resources, excuse me, to foster housing for unsheltered people and facilitate affordable housing for low or moderate income? And if you do, how would you do that?
Thank you for the question. I do support that. I support, because the things I've come to realize about affordable homes. Number one, it uplifts the rest. Number two, it encourages social connection. Number three, it also reduces overcrowding. Three, increases the adjacent properties that are valued in that community. Moreover, it attracts businesses, new jobs, and lower crime rates. So yes, I would definitely support such a thing because when people have homes, have a roof over their head, they have a certain pride about themselves that they contribute, and they have a place of belonging in our city. I believe that we must do all that we can within reason, within the tax chain, that we may be able to ensure exactly that all of our people here, our citizens who are here, will be able to have such an enterprise in their community. So I would work to expand it, working with our ship funds, working with other connections throughout the city, throughout the county, the state, and also the federal part. How do we bring people from one place of lifting them up to another place? So yes, coming from living in housing projects and moving into a home, that was a very awesome and prideful moment for my family, for my mother and for my father, for them to have such a thing where they can have a home for their children. So yes, in short, I would definitely support all aspects as long as it does not increase our taxes too much that it's unbearable for us to handle, but find other resources and other things to do and that we're able to bring that to bear. Again, thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Johnson, the same question. Do you support the use of county funds or regulatory resources to foster housing for the unsheltered and or to facilitate affordable housing for low-income and moderate-income people? And if you do support that, how would you do so?
Absolutely. Not only would I support it, I see it as the responsibility of local government officials to do things exactly like this. As an economist, I can tell you that the trends of affordable housing have been coming for a decade now to reach the crisis point that we're in now. We've had year after year after year after year to get in front of this. Nothing, well, I shouldn't say nothing because that's a little sensational, but very little has been done to curb the crisis that we now find ourselves in. The State Housing Initiatives Partnership, which is better known as our SHIP program, is an allocation of resources that comes down from state and federal dollars that counties and municipalities have access to all across this state. We should have been using that money in a more specific and geared way to not only talk about the problem now that it's a problem, but to curb and quell the problem when we knew it was coming. However, we rested on our laurels. It seemed that we weren't paying attention. And now that the gravity of the situation is so dire, everybody's speaking about it. One of the great joys that I have in this candidacy is being able to bring up issues that have pushed the conversation. And we can not only push the conversation, we're going to get in a position where we can represent these issues from a matter-of-fact point of view. I would absolutely do it. One of the things that was left out of the other two answers was the houseless and the homeless component to it. We also have an obligation to use county resources, whether they're financial or infrastructural, to help our homeless population. We have more than 800 homeless people on the street at any given time. This should not be occurring in a county and in a city like Tallahassee and Leon County. We have far too many resources. We have far too many avenues. We have far too many tributaries to get in front of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to shift to a very different topic, and that is the Doak Campbell Stadium funding that has been generating a lot of local interest. And just as a little background, the Blueprint Agency, which is joint city and county, just like they funded Walani, they also funded the football stadium by awarding $20 million to FSU in future sales tax collections, which was for part of a $100 billion enhancement project for the stadium. And then they spent $7 million to borrow those future taxes by issuing bonds. Those in favor of this represented it as new economic development because the total project, in addition to enhancing the fan experience, would FSU says add 34 permanent jobs to our economy, which works out to about $777,000 a job. Mr. Ferguson, do you believe that the $27 million blueprint tax, sales tax expenditure on the grant made to the stadium was a good example of economic development for residents of Leon County? And if you're elected, how are you going to recruit that money to be used for other projects?
Well, I would have to certainly say that I was not for the $27 million being given to just a sports arena. When the sports arena is in the 32304 area code, the poorest zip code, as I said before, I think that is a challenging moment, and it sent a direct message to all of our citizens that our elected officials weren't listening. They weren't paying attention to our concerns and our issues. And I believe that while it may produce only a few jobs, it won't produce, you know, hundreds of jobs. And a lot of people around the way are looking at this saying, do they not care? Are they not concerned about our issues, our plights? What we're going through to give $27 million to a sports arena sends a big message. Number one, that they aren't listening and not learning, and they're not leading in the capacity that wish they were elected to do so. I find that to be very disheartening because as a taxpayer, as a community activist servant leader, you know, that is a hard process to swallow and to understand. But if I am elected as the county commissioner, we will definitely hold Florida State and all of the universities will receive money from the county and the city through the blueprint and hold them accountable to make sure that our most vulnerable communities are a part of the growth, are part of the benefit of that. I want to see more jobs produced from this. I will be monitoring this very closely to ensure that $27 million and all the other money that has been matriculated to that will be a return on the investment for our community. Do I see that happening now? I don't foresee that being a situation where we are looking for an immediate impact from the $27 million that was given to the university for the stadium. And in closing, I will say this, as a commissioner, I will ensure that our dollars are spent accurately. Our citizens have major input, not just at a meeting, but moreover, before we dish that money to anybody. So again, thank you for that, for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And now, Mr. Johnson, you're next. Do you believe that the $27 million grant spent on funding the football stadium is a good example, Mr. Johnson, of economic development for residents of Leon County? And if you're elected, how would you move forward to try to recoup some of that money for the community needs in that area?
Absolutely. Can you guys hear me with the weed eater outside?
Yes.
Can you hear me pretty good? Perfect. So absolutely, I disagreed with the $27 million. As a matter of fact, very popularly so. As a matter of fact, the first time that I met Mr. Maddox this campaign cycle was February 24th, at that meeting, when a pebble was cast into the waters of our community that has caused a ripple that is humongous. And I said, please do not go forward with this for a couple of different reasons. The $20 million that's being given is being bonded with another $7 million, which is an innate admission that we can't afford this money. It's coming out of a sales tax, which is by nature regressive. Regressive taxes are the worst types of investments that you can make for this type of thing. There was less than 40 permanent jobs for our investment, and only God knows what types of jobs those will be. We could have done better. It was incumbent on us to do better. And I'm the only person in this race that spoke against the $27 million. Everybody speaks against it now because we have made it so popular to be against it. But leadership is not licking the tip of your finger and holding it up in order to see which way the wind blows. Leadership is getting in front and saying what is right and what is wrong for the county. Now, if I am elected, now that the ship has sailed, I will do anything that I can, anything in the power of a collective body like the county commission, like the county commission, or in partnership with the city commission, to bring those dollars back. If that is not possible, it is incumbent on us to hold the university, a university that I love. I'm here from seven generations. I love FSU. However, there's a responsibility that we need and a return on an investment that we need. I find it hard that we won't face diminishing returns though after $27 million.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And next, Commissioner Maddox, you voted in favor of that $27 million expenditure by Blueprint for the football stadium. We're told that it may take as many as six years or more to begin to get that money back to use for further economic development. If you are reelected, how will you move to recoup these funds for the use of the community for economic development? And do you think that this was a good example for the county in terms of economic development for the entire county?
I think it was a good example of partnership between the town gaug proposals that we like to encourage our constituents to really embrace here in Leon County. $10 million set to FAMU, set the presence for what we're talking about here today. $1 million to TCC. The 20 million that we're talking about for FSU was already slated to go there for the convention center, which came back to the table and was asked to look at stadium improvement. What I saw there was, yeah, it was 34 jobs, but it's also $85 million a year that comes in in economic development just through the limited gains that FSU has here in town. With these safety improvements and things like that that they're making there, it makes it a more, it allows for us to use it for even more festivities and events and things like that that can bring even more dollars in. But, you know, if it does take a while, I still hold FSU, FSU speak to the fire on, how do you become a better partner than you already are in helping us with our economic development here in town? Looking at the neighborhoods that you are dead in the middle of, how do you become better neighbors with those neighborhoods? How do you get your university more involved in those neighborhoods? How do we move forward with making sure that your investment in us equals your investment back into them? Our investment in you equals your investment into us. $1 billion economic development and just impact FSU alone has here in Leon County. And so do I think it's a good partnership? Do I think it's a good use? I believe that it will help us out a lot. But what I would like to see moving forward is just FSU step up to the table and us hold FSU accountable to step up to the table to do even more in this community and help us out and provide more opportunities for our most disadvantaged youth to be educated here at FSU and I care program as well. I'll meet with the president on all these things.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Our next topic is campaign contributions in local elections. And let me tell you on this, I did a little homework. I went through and I've looked at the campaign contributions for all three of the candidates through a couple of days ago, July 28. And I decided that's a lot of paperwork. I would just focus on one month and I picked the biggest month for each of you, the month where you drew in the most contribution. And so for Mr. Johnson and Mr. Maddox, your best month so far was last February. And for Mr. Ferguson, it was last March, the following month. So I'm going to start with Mr. Johnson on this question. Your biggest month in February, Mr. Johnson, your campaign raised just about $6,000 from 60 donations. Roughly, what percentage of your donations are from businesses, developers, real estate professionals versus individuals from the general community or other sources? And in answering that, I want you to also answer whether you think these donations that you've received represent the potential for or an appearance of a conflict of interest?
This was such a great question for me because there's four people in this race and I have more individual donors than all of us combined with another 60 or 70 to spare. You would think that it was that candidate that had enough room to have some questionable contributions. But no, all of my contributions, with the exception of maybe four, have come from people. I have had four from businesses. I have not been maxed out from any businesses. I have also refused to take developer dollars. And so the feat of almost 300 individual donors was done with actual individuals. There was no development stacking checks in my biggest month or any of my months. There has been no people to do business with the county commission. As a matter of fact, I told the board of realtors very flat out. I said, when they asked would I accept PEC money? I said that I do not accept money from anybody that will do business with the county commission.
Okay, thank you.
I believe in it.
But thank you.
Thank you.
And now Commissioner Maddox, you're next. Your biggest month so far was February. And in February, you raised over $18,000 from 24 named donations. Most of these donations were for $1,000 with 14 reported as having been received in a single day. Five from different companies that had the same word in their name at the same address. And six from midway companies, commercial companies, one of whom recently got contract on the stadium, $1,000, which is the maximum in Tallahassee. Would you tell us roughly what percentage of your overall total contribution? So I'm just looking at your biggest month. I've looked at the others. Are from businesses, developers, real estate professionals versus individuals from the general community and other sources? And do you think that this ratio represents the potential for or the appearance of a conflict of interest?
Thank you. I think for the question, I do have a large percent of my donations coming from businesses. But do I believe that it represents a conflict of interest? No. I stand on my own. I make my own decisions. I think that squarely depends on the person who is receiving the donations. I will not allow myself to be bought or bullied into making any decisions as a county commissioner. What I will do is look at every situation and make the best decision I can for our community. And so, yes, I have a lot of businesses that support me, a lot of developers that support me. But will it influence me as a county commissioner? Absolutely not. That's not the way I do my job. And if you go back and look at some of my decisions, you will see that I have not always done what the business community wanted me to do. I do what I believe to be right by the community.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Ferguson, you're next in the hot seat here. For March, your campaign raised also a total of about $6,000 in that month from 26 donations. And they were all over the place. And so I have the same question. Roughly, what percentage of your contributions are from businesses, developers, and individuals in the real estate field versus individuals in the general community and/or other sources roughly of your overall donations? And do you feel that it may represent a potential for or appearance of a conflict?
Well, thank you for that. I would say, as a pastor, as a preacher, I know how to raise money. I know how to ask for money. I just chose not to ask a lot of people for money because we're still in the midst of a pandemic. And while Mr. Johnson may have more donations and while he may have a little more endorsements, that is a mute point when it comes down to the very fabric of what we're supposed to be doing in the community. It's not about how much money you raise and who gave it to you. It's moreover important of what you're going to do in your actions. So I have no developers. I chose that I had several developers to call me that wanted to get behind my race and wanted to give. But I do not feel comfortable asking or accepting money from any business that's going to do business with the county. I feel in my own personal spirit is that I'm going to feel somewhat obligated to oblige them in some kind of way because they gave me money to my campaign. I don't want to fill in that capacity. I want to serve the people. All of my money, you're right, is all over the place. I asked several different people, family members and friends and neighbors, people just boots on the ground, grassroots organizations who can give me $10. In fact, my campaign led with 10 for the win. I wasn't asking for $50, $100, only asked for $10 because I know a lot of my community residents and friends, they're struggling to regain their footing in the midst of this pandemic. And the thing that I could do as a leader is work with that. Let me also say this in closing, that I have my own money. I decided to invest with my wife's permission, some of our money that we set aside so that I could run an effective campaign, whatever, having to knock on people's doors and knock them over the head saying, I'm going to be the best commissioner. If you give me $100, I'll serve you well. So with that being said, my record speaks on it. So yes, I'm last in raising funds, but I'm first in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we're going to shift to a very different topic. And that is one that we are all aware of from the weekly news, the daily news, violent crime in our community. Murders and violent crime, of course, occur among people of all races, among people of all economic circumstances. But we've seen in some parts, in some neighborhoods of Leon County, that there is a particularly devastating situation going on there. In so many ways, it's evidenced by violent crime. What can we do that we aren't already doing to cut the toll of shootings and other violence in our community? And that's the question, but I'm going to start with Commissioner Maddox. And since you've been on the commission now for about 12 years, I want to ask what, not only what we can do, but what have you done to support the efforts to cut the toll of shootings and other violence in our community?
Violent crime is the worst it's ever been in Leon County. The state prevents us a lot from having anything to do with gun laws and things like that with our preemption. I remember when I first got on the commission, we had a couple of things on the books and the state said, if you don't take them off, you will absolutely be fined as well as be put off of or removed from your seat for keeping them on the books. Right now, I think what we have to do is we have, it's a cultural shift. We have to get to our children. We have to get to those people who are most impoverished and tell them, hey, this violent crime that we have in these streets that you're in is not the way to provide for your family. There's a different way to do this thing. Conflict resolution, which I know Reverend Ferguson deals with, something we need to talk to our children about. But when I lean, when I think about what we need to do most, we need to rely on our law enforcement and our sheriff and our police department. And the answer that they come up with, make sure they're well-funded. Our police department is about 400 strong. They need to be 700 in order to do the community policing that they would like to do and get out of their cars and get into our communities. Our sheriff has asked for a council on men and boys that I led the effort and making a motion to get started here in Leon County. And with that is going to be resources. The Children's Services Council and the money we gave there is going to help us with children's programs and things like that to keep, give our kids opportunities. Leon Cares is something that we do every single year to try to expose our kids to the trades and things like that. CHSP money that helps out, Healthy Human Services. There are so many things that we're doing already. We just need to contribute to it, keep moving the ball forward and rely on the sheriff and the police department to give us the answers of even more things that we need to do. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. And now you, Mr. Ferguson, the same question. What can we do to cut the toll of shootings and other violence in our community?
Thank you so much for the question. Well, I just didn't start working cutting back on gun violence and bringing our communities to a healthy place and safe place. I've been doing this all of my life. I started working for the Urban League when I was 17, 18 years of age. So I've been working on behalf of our communities, teaching anger management, teaching gang resistance education. With that being said, it's a segue to say that I am the chairman of the City Advisory Council for the Tallahassee Police Department. And in that capacity, I have worked along with my other administrators and along with the Tallahassee Police Department to bridge the gap between our most vulnerable communities and law enforcement. I've always spoken out on how do we rectify the problem? I opened the Dream Center of Tallahassee that will work with our young children who feel the way of the gun is the way of their life. And so you may have seen me on television. You might have saw me in the newspapers speaking out, bringing, having town hall meetings and having press conferences and asking the mayor, speaking before the mayor dating back since John Marks was mayor. So I would say that I've been speaking to the county commissioner, city commissioner in regards to this. In fact, I spoke in regards to the status of men and boys with all of our commissioners there to say, hey, listen, back up with the sheriff department with this Anatomy of a Homicide. I will also say in closing, last thing I would say in closing, is that while I did not speak on the $27 million that Mr. Johnson looted, he was the only one. That's because I've spoken on several occasions throughout my 30 years of talking to the city and the county commission.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Johnson, the same question, what can we do or what would you do to cut the toll of shootings and other violence in our community?
Victor Hugo, great writer, says, wherever there is darkness, there will be crime. Moreover, the guilty party is not he who commits the crime, but sometimes he who casts the darkness. Yes, we have a crime problem. I teach at a Title I high school. The crime problem that we're dealing with is usually happening with African-American males from 18 to 25, or 18 to 30. It's not what I will do, it's what I am doing every day. I am seeing the populations affected most by it. And I see what happens when they get connections with trade opportunities. I see what happens when they get connection to educational opportunities. I see what happens when they have jobs that can afford livable wages. I've read The Anatomy of a Homicide, right? Everybody reads that as a report. I don't read that as a report. I read it as a novel because I know the characters and it is a graphic novel. There are very particular things that we can and that we haven't been doing to get in the way and curb violent crime. You know, Rudy brings up the 27 million and gives me credit for it. And I appreciate that so much because that's money that we could have been using to actually get in front of the things that they're talking about. I don't want to talk about it. I want to be about it. And the only way that you can be about it is investing and prioritizing these things. And you can see what a person's priority is by where they put their investments. And maybe it's stadium upgrades for some, but not for me. It's the boys that I teach every day.
Thank you. Our next topic is related, it has to do with the criminal law and the criminalization of individual conduct. And the topic is civil infraction for possession of marijuana. For many people, especially young people, a criminal arrest for possession of marijuana can be devastating. The impact can depend on your socioeconomic status. But for most people, it's expensive, it's stressful, it can cost someone their financial aid, all kinds of consequences. I'll interject here that years ago, I asked Sheriff Campbell at a candidate forum, he was running against Mr. Mills and a woman, I can't remember her name. And I asked him if he I'm sorry?
Lisa Sprague.
Yes. I asked him, excuse me, I common myself. I asked him if he supported an option for a, if a local ordinance to make possession of marijuana for personal use a civil infraction so that his officers would have the discretion to not arrest, either not arrest with a notice to appear or any other way. And his answer was yes, that he would support that. And we hear that all the time from retired law enforcement. And so my question is for each of you, and I'm going to have, I'm going to start with Mr. Ferguson because you're next in the barrel. Given the impact that a criminal charge has on a person's future, would you support a county ordinance making simple possession of marijuana for personal use a mere civil infraction, communicating to law enforcement and the state attorney that civil enforcement is what we want on this offense in Leon County?
Well, I certainly would be. As I would say this, and let me just be pragmatic, that those who are using marijuana recreationally, I do understand the gravity and I understand that it's a popular thing and it's nothing new that it just started. It's been going on for many, 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 many years since this was created. But here's what I've seen, the infraction. I've seen a lot of our young, in particular, young black boys who have also been arrested for simple possession with personal use and have gone to jail and have felonies behind it, which enables them, or should I say disables them from getting a job, from going to school. And also it follows them for a very long time. I work with young people and have worked with young people who are still at that felony of a charge and that they can't go any further. But I would work along with Jack Campbell in regards to a simple, how to rectify that problem without having them to have a felony possession, I'm sorry, felony conviction on their record. How do we work through it to maybe the diversion program? Some people, honestly, some people are addicted to marijuana and some of them may just need some counseling in regards, especially our young people before it gets too far. But I definitely would support the state attorney, working along with him to ensure that this is not a criminal situation where they have felonies or they go to prison behind it or it stops them from going to school.
So you would support an ordinance decriminalizing possession of marijuana under local law?
I would.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson, I believe you're next, given the impact that a criminal Thank you. And uh, uh, Mr. Johnson, I believe you're next, uh, given the impact that a criminal charge can have on a person's future, would you support a county ordinance making uh simple possession of marijuana for personal use a civil infraction? Communicating to law enforcement and the state attorney that civil enforcement is what we want in Leon County on this offense?
Um, not only would I support it, for the better part of a decade, I have been on record fighting for it. Uh, you know, I, I'm on record a lot with these things uh because I'm vocal and I try to be a leader. So absolutely, I support that. I've been fighting for criminal justice reform, like I said, for better part of a decade. Moreover than that, uh, this question is so serendipitous. Thursday night, an attorney reached out to me on behalf of one of my former students to uh write a letter of recommendation because the student was caught with 22 grams of marijuana. Just two grams over the limit, something that is now a charge that is going to ruin Jaquan's life. This is a sturdy, intelligent, capable and charismatic young man who was participating in something that should not have the power to ruin his life. As a candidate for office, not as a private citizen, while I'm in the middle of a campaign where any implication that I do can be something that people put a magnifying glass on. I said, not only will I write the letter, I'm gonna put my name on it. And if you need me to show up and speak for him, I will. This is an obligation that is personal, not just professional to me. Absolutely, uh, this should just be a civil citation. It is something that is accepted too broadly to still be ruining lives.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Maddox, I know you've heard the, the question, uh, briefly, given the permanent impact that a criminal arrest can have on a person's future, would you support a county ordinance decriminalizing possession of marijuana for personal use? Making it a civil infraction locally and communicating to law enforcement and Jack Campbell, what his father would have done as sheriff, I'm telling you. Uh, that this is what we want in Leon County.
Bill, I appreciate the question. We've actually had this conversation about two different times already where we asked the uh workshops, where we asked the state attorney and the sheriff to come to the table and ha- and talk about these, this exact issue, 20 grams or less. Uh, Bill Proctor made the, the motion, I seconded it for it, for, for the workshop. We had a long conversation about it. What we found out is that uh, the sheriff and, and both the, the state attorney said, no one, not one of the people in Leon County Jail right now, as they said it, this is, this is words from them, uh, were in jail for a charge of less than 20 grams. And so what we said in, in return was, okay, um, we understand, they, they know they have the option right now of civil citation. Um, and we asked them, well, I asked them plain out, if we implemented a ordinance that says it is a civil citation and no other thing, will you honor that? And their, and their response to it is they would enforce the law, the federal law that they have been, they have been sworn to enforce. And so with, with them saying such, what I told them is, if it becomes an issue where we have a lot of young people in our jails being, being there as a, as a result of 20 grams or less, we will bring this back and I will absolutely support uh moving forward with the civil citation. At that point, you'll just have to do what you have to do. But while they're contin- continuing right now to do a good job of just giving civil citations instead of, instead of moving forward with uh, with criminal law or making it a, a jellible offense, I was okay with it. And so the answer to your question is yes, I will support it. Uh, and I have, and we have had a conversation with the sheriff as well as the state attorney. And they understand that, that, that our direction right now is to move in the, in the direction of civil citation and not taking our young people to jail and putting, putting something on their record.
So you, you, are you saying that you would support it if the sheriff and the state attorney want you to do it?
No, sir, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying to you is, is that I believe that, I don't believe in doing things that's just symbolic in nature. What we have to do is we have to get to a point where, where if we create a situation where we say the ordinance is a civil citation that both our state attorney and our sheriff will honor what we said as, 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 as the commission, as it being a civil citation. Now, in the meanwhile, what I, what I'm saying is, is that it, it, we, they know they have the option and they have used that option to a point that no one in our jails are there for 20 grams or less.
Uh, I'll, I'll just say that they've had that option for years and years and they hardly ever use it. They uh, they divert people into a system where they have to pay money if they have a criminal arrest on their record. And that criminal arrest, even if they get it expunged, they have used up the only expungement they can in their life. And they've hired a lawyer, they have their teachers' rights. So anyway, I just wanted, I'm sorry to fact check you on that, but I think that, I, I hope that uh, when this issue comes back, that you will uh follow up a little more closely with what you want the other leaders to do.
Well, I mean, I was, I'm willing to have the conversation. I'm just going strictly off of what I heard from, what, what I was told and, and the facts that was given to me by this, by the sheriff as well as the state attorney and staff. So I'm willing to continue to have the conversation. I don't, I don't want to cause any trouble for any, any kids either. I was one of those kids, so I don't want them to go through the, through, through the plight of, of being jailed either or having anything on their record.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Bill. Yes, sir.
All right, well, and we have, uh, maybe we don't have time for one more question. I think, uh, yep, I think we're gonna have to stop uh with questions from me, which I consider a great relief. And uh, we're gonna go to uh audience questions. Um, and uh, so uh, we, we have, we're going to give audience members who are doing it live uh one minute, excuse me, yeah, one minute for the question and candidates, one minute for their response. I'm gonna do my best to get this clock going. Uh, and so uh, here's what, what, what I have to tell you. It's now time to go to the section in our program where we take questions. We want to see uh everybody on the Zoom, so we can turn on their pictures now, uh, bring up the light, so to speak. And uh, if you have a question and you haven't already done so, go ahead and put your question uh in the chat. Uh, make sure that you've allowed video on your little postage stamp here, your image on Zoom. And then we're gonna give you, I'll be told who's, who's up and uh, we're gonna give you one minute uh to, to uh ask your question and then one minute uh for each answer. And uh, so the, the co-hosts are gonna let me know here. I'll call your name and uh, if we don't have a glitch, and then you'll be unmuted to ask your question. All right, uh, we have an audience question from John Coulter. And so uh, I'll ask the co-host to unmute John so he can ask his, his question.
Uh, excuse me if I don't put on my camera, uh, currently folding laundry.
That's good.
Uh, yeah, uh, so I have several questions, uh, so I'll, I'll type those in just so I'm not skipping stack here or anything. Uh, if I'm supposed to format these so they are specific to all of the candidates and not in response to one particular point, um, I guess the question would be, how is Bragg Memorial Stadium and funding to a historically underfunded HDBU uh similar to the $20 million given to FSU for luxury seedings and bathrooms and routine improvements to one of the best funded institutions in this city?
Okay, so that, uh, I think you all heard the question. The candidates will go with uh, um, all three of the candidates and I'm gonna try to rotate you all in alphabetical order, but correct me when I get it wrong. And I'll just start with uh, um, as before, I am going to start with Mr. Johnson.
So, uh, thank you for the question, John. And right off the bat, the answer to the question is it's not the same. Um, however, if we would like to go a step further and say that crawling out of pandemic, um, our stadium, uh, luxury stadium improvement shouldn't have been prioritized. I'm fine with that too, but I agree with you. There is no comparison between an HBCU that's historically underfunded and the false equivalency of stadium upgrades to one of the most well-funded state institutions in the country. Uh, on, moreover than that, crawling out of that pandemic, Bragg Memorial Stadium, stadium was being used for county-wide COVID relief and vaccine response. There is no equivalency to that. It's just been a sensational from the other side. There is none.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I believe that probably was uh pointing towards me, John, and I was not making a comparison of the two. I said that FAMU, uh, Bragg Stadium set the presence, meaning that was the first stadium we gave the money to, uh, we set the presence. I, I don't think there was a comparison of the two. Um, but what I will, what I will say is that they both uh provide economic impact to our community that we have to consider as economic development as well. So I, there was no comparison. I was not comparison, comparing the two. I was simply saying that we started with 10 million from Bragg and it went on to 1 million to TCC and, and ended up with 20 million, uh, with seven, with 27 million for, for FSU. So it was not a comparison.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Ferguson, what do you have to say on that question?
I will certainly say there was, there was no comparison whatsoever. Uh, when it comes down to one of the, the biggest universities in the state of Florida, uh, one of the most prosperous universities in the state of Florida versus one of the uh, HBU, uh, BC community, uh, churches, I'm sorry, oh goodness, uh, uh, colleges. Uh, I've, I've had the privilege of being in, in Bragg Stadium and I've seen where you look at that stadium and you see the rust in the nails and that are, that are tied to uh, uh, the, 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 uh, the, the pillows, if you will, of that, of that. And any given time, it's old, very old community, uh, community, uh, it's a very old, um, uh, stadium rather, if you will. And I think there was no comparison. I don't see where the benefit of FSU receiving $20 million versus what uh FAMU received $10 million. And I'm certainly, I would say that uh, that's something that our community will have to live with for a very long time and try to process that decision.
Thank you. Uh, all right. And um, I, I think that's everyone has had a chance to answer that lightning round. Uh, I now have a question from Facebook, uh, that I'm going to read to you from Susan on Facebook. What will you do to protect the reproductive rights and health of people who live in Leon County? And I'm sure that's in light of the recent US Supreme Court decision. And this time we're gonna start for one minute with Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I think the most we can do right now is just try to be there as a supportive, uh, in support of those who, who, uh, whose reproductive rights were, were taken away. But also reach out to our federal government and let them know the disapproval that we may have in, in, in the overturning of Roe versus Wade. It's, it's a shame that, it's a federal issue. It's one of those things that we, we, we don't, we just don't have control over here at the local level. But what we can do is we can voice our, our disapproval and try to provide support for our, for, for our, uh, for our young ladies and our women here that, that, that will be complete, uh, that will be impacted uh by the, by the overturn of Roe versus Wade.
All right, thank you. And uh, now, Mr. Ferguson, to what will you do to protect the reproductive rights and health of, uh, people in Leon County? You have one minute.
I would say that uh, it was a despicable decision. I think a woman has the right to make the decisions for her body, on her body alone. No one uh should be in a position to make a decision for a woman's body. It is important to understand that that decision that came down from the federal government, Supreme Court, I thought that was a slap in the face to, to the women and to my mother, to my grandmother and all the women that are, and even the young women that are coming up today. They uh, actually took away something that, that they already had taken away from them, rights. Their, 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 their rights to, to be women, their rights to be mothers, their rights to make decisions for their bodies. So I will continue to support uh, any woman in a capacity. In fact, I received the 2019 award from the Men Who Support Women Award from the Leon County Democratic Women's Club. So that tells you that I'm standing with women in all regards because they have a voice and they need to be heard.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, what would you do to protect the reproductive rights and health of people in Leon County?
Sort of squeeze an incredible uh state news outlet, who I would eventually get the endorsement of. I published an article and the article said, um, out of every candidate in the race that we're in, Josh Johnson is the only one that has shown up at these women rallies. They are right in some ways that the county commission is hamstrung because it's a federal issue. But being in Leon County, we are a blue lake in a red ocean. It is incumbent on local government officials and local government personalities in Leon County to show women that we're on their side, not just talk about it in forum rooms. When I was getting the great reception from the National Organization of Women, it was because I have been there time and time again, publicly. Again, this keeps coming up. Mr. Johnson's doing all of this stuff publicly, not just in the forums. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, um, our next question is going to be on uh Zoom and it'll be Steve Martin. And so I'm going to ask that he be uh unmuted, so he could ask his question.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? All right. Earlier, they were asked to be grading the uh county in general about land use and growth management. Boy, we got some generous graders here. I, I'd like them to think about particular development. It's gotten a lot of attention on Walani Plantation. Uh, we're talking about canopy development and what grade you give it and then a related follow-up. The developers of canopy are known to have made their way into this community and exert a lot of influence, a lot of bundled campaign donations. And of course, the longer somebody's on the commission, the more likely it is that these people will uh get to know you. And I just was wondering what your thoughts about term limits might be. So a, a grade on canopy and then your thoughts about term limits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, I think you all heard the question and we'll start with Mr. Ferguson this time, please.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Uh, I do agree with you. And number one, let me answer from the back way here, it's cause that's the, as far as term limits, I believe since the president, the governor and all of our other elected officials are pretty much on term limits. I believe it gives room for new blood, new ideas and new concepts. Certainly, I believe uh that, that, that all, everyone that's a constitutional officer should be on the term limit. There should be no lifelong situations where you can lock down a seat in a community or until the duration of your life, so to speak. Um, but I also see that where a lot of developers have come into our town and we don't have a lot of local developers who are benefiting from this thing. So I would say uh, in regards to it, when you look at the canopy, when you look at Malini, when you look at those things, you don't see that you see political moves, you see political strategies bait and switch.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, very good. And uh, next on that, uh, we have Mr. Johnson, to remind you, it's uh, give a grade on canopy and term limits on county commission.
So let me be clear and give a grade, okay? Um, I think that's an F and I'm so glad that he asked for a specific uh developer because that's why I gave the D because a lot more goes into it. So thank you for that, Mr. Martin. The second thing is term limits. I think then we all agree because Rudy's just given his answer. I'm gonna say uh, yes, in a lot of ways. And I think Mr. Maddox agrees because he told Cliff Thel that 12 years was long enough and now he's running for 16 years, right? Uh, we have to, you have to practice what you preach and I think we've been seeing not a lot of that lately, Mr. Martin. So thank you for the chance to answer your question upfront.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And next, I think uh, is Mr. Ferguson, uh, excuse me.
Oh, sir, it's actually
Commissioner Maddox, I'm so glad, I'm sorry, I'm having a senior moment there, buddy.
That's fine, that's fine.
A letter grade on canopy and term limits on the Leon County Commission.
Thank you. I would give us a C. Uh, when I, when I look at that, what I think about is I look back to see uh the facts of it and look at the fact that um, that was an agreement that made, that was made a long time ago that just wasn't managed the right way along the way. Uh, and even when you look at also the fact that I believe that the planning commission approved it as well. We just, we just could have done more to be more informative about it and, and even uh, along the way of the, of the 20-year development agreement, just, just in, in the expansion or the planned expansion, just continue to, to, continue to work on, uh, the reminder being put out there and everything like that. As far as term limits, uh, I did not say that Cliff Thel was there too long. They should have been gone in, in 12. What I, what I, what I do, what I do remember is saying is that it was time for new blood. I believe that term limits happen naturally. When you have served so long that, that people begin to see that you're no longer in touch, they will vote you out. Uh, they will tell you through their vote that they no longer want you to be there. What I believe is that if someone is doing a good job, uh, and that, and that they still identify with the community and can still uh move in a direction of the community.
Thank you.
And here can offer that they, that, that, that they, that, and they win elections, of course. I believe they, they should still be there. So um, if, if, if Cliff Thel was still reasonably with the uh, with the So um, if 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 Cliff Thel was still reasonably with the uh with the times and people thought he was the right person, he would have won that race and I I believe he could have served.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Uh, okay, the next uh question I see here is from John Hendrick. He's on Zoom. And so he'll need to be unmuted.
Yes, thank you, Bill. The um Democratic, the Leon Democratic Executive Committee supported the creation of the Children's Services Council. And my question is this, this CRC so far has not utilized its maximum millage of point five. Now, not the first year and now apparently they're trying not to use it the second year. The question for you is all is, should they be using the maximum millage of point five mils to better provide for services to the children in our community? And whatever your answer is, please explain it. Thank you.
All right, uh, this um, I believe that we're gonna start with Mr. Johnson through this. Uh, well, actually, we ended with Mr. Maddox, so we're gonna start with Mr. Maddox this time.
Thank you.
Actually, we're shall, go go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. So um, I believe that they're they're making the right decision for them. Um, do we need as much money to go towards our youth as possible? Yes. Uh, but I do, I I think we also have to be conscious of the fact that we have a pending recession coming as quickly as possible. We gotta be sensitive to the fact that how it's going to affect our 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 constituents here in Leon County. And so if if they inch their way up to it, I'm fine with that. I trust the judgment of those folks uh who are all who are mostly elected uh on what they think and how they think we should move forward with that funding. Uh, but as as soon as they can get to a place where they where they're where they're maximizing their funding to get to our to give mu- much money out to our kids and our organization who are helped, organizations who are helping them as possible, uh, the better. But I I trust the judgment of what of the way they're moving and and the and the sensitivity that they're showing towards the electorate that has to look at different millage rates from the city, county, school board and now the CSC.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson, same question.
Um, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sometimes it's okay to say I'm not sure. I am not uh privy to all of the reasons that they are not extending the millage that they have been given. I am not on the internal uh apparatus of the CSC. But I will say one of the themes of my campaign has been unintended consequences. And that's one of the things we fought against uh when the CSC was coming in, not the CSC itself, but the unintended consequences that could occur with the CSC. And so more than them not using their millage, I think is them maybe not using or allocating the funds to the places that needed the most. The report that just ran into Tallahassee Democrat showed us that the most and that there may be services that are pinpointing children's services issues more accurately and appropriately than where money is being gone. So I do not know the reasons for them not using the amount of their millage, but that's my stance on that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Uh, all right, and uh, Mr. Ferguson, what is your response to that question?
Well, I certainly would say that uh they should max it because we have a lot of problems in this community with our young people. We have gun violence at all time high. Uh, we have the highest rate uh and and throughout in Leon County, Tallahassee, Florida, where young people are dying or going to the hospital and moreover going to prison for attempted murder under the ten-twenty life. And I think that we ought to um really take full charge, take an unconventional, a non-traditional approach to addressing that issue. So yes, I don't believe that that the monies are going to the to the boots-on-the-ground agencies. It's not going to those who have the necessary expertise and skills to really bring our young people back to the place of being positive, productive citizens. I believe it needs to be re- rechanneled. I think the policy measures need to be revisited. And I think a new procedure ought to be in place. That way I know we would ensure that every aspect of our children, all of our, will be served.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Well, the clock is telling me, among others, that uh we are gonna have to uh close out our questioning in terms of the public questions right now. And I I uh see a lot of them here. Uh, people have other questions. I'm just sorry we don't have more time. We got, just gotta bring it to a close. But um, the uh for the benefit of the audience up in the chat somewhere, all of the candidates have been asked to put contact information on how you can reach out to them with your questions or with your offers of support or whatever else you feel like there. Um, and uh, but before we go, I I do want to give each of the commissioners uh one sort of a summary. It won't be a minute unless it's a really long sentence, one sentence, but we'll have to put a a minute limit on there. Uh, if you would tell us, uh, each of you, uh, and I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Ferguson. Uh, I hope I'm doing this in some rational order, uh, trying to. Um, and ask you, if you are elected to the county commission, what is the most important commitment you now make to the residents of Leon County?
Thank you so much for that. I'm glad the fact that you called all of us commissioners. I received that. Rudy, I'm ready for the community and I'm here to run for the community. I've been running for the better part of thirty years. And I may be the oldest, but I believe I'm also the most seasoned because I've seen more and I've experienced more and I've worked with longer. And I will say this, not to discount anyone's education or anything of that nature, but I have the proven track record of being a community servant. I've served in that capacity. And I will continue to do that as your Leon County Commissioner, to serve in that capacity. So in closing, I would say, wrong with Rudy because.
That's a long sentence there. That was a good one. Uh, now I'm going, in all fairness, uh, ask for uh Commissioner Maddox, uh, uh, one sentence for one minute. Then we'll go to Commissioner Johnson. And I mean, I mean Candidate Johnson, of course.
Well, well, I I I think when you said one sentence for one minute, one sentence for, if it takes a minute to get out one sentence, that's a long sentence.
I agree. So hurry up.
What I will, what I what I will say is that I commit to working on poverty and crime over the next four years and just not being in the same place there. And I'll stop my one sentence right there.
Thank you. Thank you. And quote Commissioner Johnson.
Uh, my sentence was given to me uh by my high school teacher, typing class. In order to type a full breadth of the word of the keys on the keyboard, the sentence was, now is the time for all good boys and girls to come to the aid of their county. I am going to change one letter, uh, the aid of their country. I'm gonna change one letter to make it county. And when I get in office, we are going to make public investments, a more equitable endeavor so that we can curb environmental issues, affordable housing, crime and all of the workforce, small business and all of the other things that have become deleterious to us. And the promise that I make to the voters is it will not take me twelve years to get it done.
Now, Bill, everybody gotta run on sentence with me now.
Well, but you got credit for being so brief.
Oh, well, I take it.
I want to thank all of the the candidates uh for participating today. You've been very patient with me and and uh I appreciate that. And I want to thank the audience for being here and for being interested. And uh, last but not least, I want to thank the organizers who have guided me so well uh in anticipation of this. Thank you to all you folks. Um, I want to let you know that this is the uh seventh one of these that we've done for Democratic candidates. And there's a not, there's nine of them in the summer series, we're calling it. And we have them every Saturday. We're gonna do them all the way through August thirteenth. Remember, August twenty-third is election day for our our local elections in the primary cycle. So we hope to see you at the next one next weekend. And uh now we're gonna hear a few announcements from your Democratic Executive Committee. And I'll be quiet and be able to relax for the rest of the afternoon. I hope you do too. You can too.
I want to remind everyone that a recording of this and every candidate forum will be available on the Leon Dim's Facebook page and the Leon County Democratic Party YouTube channel. So please check out recordings of those forums you have missed. Please mark your calendar for the next Democratic Candidate Forum. We're moving to the school board race for District One. Candidates Anthony DeMarco and Alva Striplin. That's this coming Saturday, a week from today. Uh, hope you'll attend. And thank you so much for attending this candidate forum today. Be well and be safe. Thank you all.